20th of 2020. If you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Bart Conne.
Here.
Daryl Odenbowski.
Here.
PJ McGlock.
Here.
Cam Willow.
Here.
Bruce Reed.
Here.
Robert Rizzo.
Here.
Dan Bogary.
Here on the phone.
Thank you. All present, come.
Okay. Approval of the agenda.
I mean, we're going to approve the agenda for July 20th, 2020 as submitted.
Second of motion.
And we'll do a roll call, please.
Okay.
Do I need to repeat it?
I'm sorry.
Do I need to repeat it? All those in favor of, and then he does the roll call. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted, roll call, please.
Bart Conne.
Yes.
Daryl Odenbowski.
Yes.
PJ McGlock.
Yes.
Cam Willow.
Yes.
Bruce Reed.
Yes.
Robert Rizzo.
Yes.
And Dan Bogary.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright. Number five, public comment. Done. Okay. Number seven, public hearing. File number 20-003, proposed amendments to text in the township zoning ordinance amendments to the official zoning map. Do we have a... Can we open the public hearing?
You want me to motion open it?
Make a motion.
You do the motion?
No, I'm not doing it.
I make a motion to open the public hearing on 20-003, proposed amendments for the text in the township zoning ordinance amendments and zoning map as submitted.
My second?
Alright.
Second.
Okay. Bruce speak to it.
It's a second, second.
Two seconds, that's okay. Okay, so... It is 7:33.
As of 7:33.
Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call. Bart Conne.
Yes.
Daryl Odenbowski.
Yes.
PJ McGlock.
Yes.
Cam Willow.
Yes.
Bruce Reed, yes. Robert Rizzo.
Yes.
And Dan Bogary.
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing is open. To a brief...
So I can give you a brief explanation of what the amendments are. In your packet is the ordinance amendment, proposed text amendments in adoption language. That's what would ultimately go to the board. Essentially, what you see there is what will be in the zoning ordinance if this is ultimately approved. So you have seen these proposed amendments a number of times with the red lines throughout the past number of months as we've worked on bringing the ordinance into conformance with the items that were updated in the master plan. So specifically here, in addition, there were a couple cleanup items. One had to do with the requirement for fences around pools. The building code now allows for automatic covers, so you don't need a fence. A lot of people are opting for that. So we made that change. The public hearing requirements in the zoning enabling act were changed back in 2006 that no longer required individuals to place signs on their property. So that was kind of an humorous task that cost them extra money and it was kind of a pain. It's no longer required by the state, so we didn't feel that it was necessary to have that in our ordinance. And then we also needed to update the private road section of the ordinance to reference the actual private road ordinance number that was adopted. We did that. So those are a couple cleanup items. The rest really has to do with making sure that the references in the handle it center district sections of the ordinance and the urban service district reference back to the correct sections in the master plan. And then we did a lot of work with the urban service district requirements itself to get those in line with the vision that was created through the master plan. And so again, you've seen all of that a number of times. We've made comments on it, we've made revisions to it. I think it's in the shape that you provide the direction for. In addition, because the master plan can see the consolidation of the research and research applications district and the residential office park district into one, we needed to do some updates throughout the ordinance, including changing the use table and the dimensional standards table to show that as one column as opposed to the two different districts. And then that also precipitated the need to update the zoning map. And so that's in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions or we can discuss this after the public hearings closed. I did put one letter on your desk that we received from the council for Salem Springs LLC and Showstack affiliates who own all of the parcels that are being proposed to change from residential office park and research and research oriented applications to business park. And so I would suggest that we bring that to business park.
Okay. I see that was from Jeffrey Schlossel, CarsonFisher.com. It was submitted today, Monday, July 20th at 2:41 PM to Ed Plato. Rezoning, or zoning ordinance amendments. Ed, I believe the township's planning commission is considering this evening the proposed zoning ordinance amendment that you forwarded to me a few weeks ago that directly impacts the 90-acre parcel in the USD that we have commonly referred to as centerpiece owned by Salem Springs owner LLC and those other applicable properties owned by Showstack Brothers affiliates. As has been previously expressed, our client does not believe that current zoning is adequate for the potential development of the centerpiece. This is of great significance to Salem Springs owner LLC and the other Showstack affiliates because they are the largest property owners in the USD and one of the biggest investors in the township and are fully committed to the success for all concern of the vision of the USD. While our client does not object to the additional uses that may be entitled by the proposed zoning amendment and the new business park designation, it is our belief that there are other uses that should be found to be acceptable. The Showstack affiliated entities have been and continues to be available to discuss alternatives and would prefer to address and resolve this issue, resolve this matter before any modification to the ordinance takes place. If this is not done, then we fully anticipate having to address this matter again at a later date, and there should be no doubt that neither Salem Springs owners LLC nor the other Showstack affiliate entities owning property within the USD to which proposed amendment will apply have consented to the limitations that will exist if approved. Please let me know if you wish to discuss. And I see that Ed has responded at 3:17, so...
No, that was just his... This was the end of...
Oh, that was, okay. No, that was him sending the information to them.
Correct.
July 2nd.
July 2nd. So they responded back today at 2:41, and then Ed suggested that they go ahead and send this along to planning commission, which they did it for something today. So we went ahead and printed it off and brought it along to you.
Oh, okay.
We don't have specifics?
No, but once we close the public hearing, we can discuss this.
Okay.
There's no one here representing these people here at the public hearing? Which would be the time to address it?
Well, it's, this letter is there right, but without...
Right, they're not here.
Specifics here, we can't.
Right.
I mean...
You're right.
Definitely like you do. I mean, postpone. Well, whatever kind of public hearing, then we can talk about that.
Yeah, okay. I just, I'm missing something. I think we do this so we can talk and so we can understand, so we can make a decision in third... Okay. I'm still learning.
No. Mr. Harton.
Seeing as I haven't been here or any notification, does this have any bearing whatsoever on the general document?
No.
Just what's written here?
Correct.
Because we didn't get any notification, so I'm just, I'm curious.
Always good to ask.
Too late, too late after you voted. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
What is the time?
It is 7:42.
Ready for your amendment?
We have to close it.
Okay. Don't you have to make an amendment to close?
Yeah.
Okay, at 7:42, I'd like to make an amendment to close the public hearing on file number 20-003, proposed amendments to the text in township zoning ordinance and amendment to the official zoning map.
We have a second?
All second.
Thank you, Chris. He's still there. I can hear him.
I don't, I didn't, I did last time, somebody else seconded it and I seconded it again, so I wasn't sure.
There's a little bit of a delay, Dan, it's okay. We're good.
Yeah.
Okay. All those, and we'll do a roll call.
Roll call.
Of closing.
Bart.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
PJ.
Yes.
Cam.
Yes.
Bruce, yes.
Robert.
And Dan.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Well, we have been through this multiple times, although it seems like almost a lifetime ago. Does anyone have...
What question on that 90 acres?
Okay.
Yeah, so now we're on to the next business item.
I want to ask on the...
I mean, once the public hearing is closed, then we can move on to the next.
Oh, okay.
And then the board talk? Yep, and then the board, the next agenda is referencing the statement.
Okay, so now a new business item. File number 20-003, proposed amendments to text in the township zoning ordinance and amendments to the official zoning map. PJ, did you have a... Dan, anything?
No.
Bob?
Yeah, just, I can ask a question regarding that 90 acres in that letter that was written by Showstack. Now is the time. By reading that, it looks like, maybe you can correct me, Paul, but they want to maybe add uses?
So I have not been privated conversations with them in the past about what they want to add there. It sounds like they had made the suggestion that they don't like the existing zoning, so the existing zoning there for the bulk of that was research and research oriented... Excuse me, no, I think the bulk of that was...
It was residential business.
Residential business, yeah. So by consolidating those two districts, we basically took all the uses that were permitted in either and made it one. So they're actually gaining uses, which they reference as business park uses, because the, you know, as we discussed, the residential business park is kind of a weird district and doesn't seem quite viable. I think what they want there is commercial.
That's, I was just going to say, they want commercial.
But really, so in my opinion, the time to address that would be during a master planning process, not by, not a rezoning process. The master planning process is when you put the policy behind that area saying what we expect to see there. When we created the future land use plan, this is what the master plan directs you to do. So if a property owner wanted to write some commentary on that, I think the appropriate time for that to be changed would be through the master planning, and then you come back and do the zoning to reflect the master plan. So if they want to have that conversation at some point in the future, I think that would be the time to do it.
So it's more so on what it is zoned, not what you necessarily could do in that zone.
So if you recall, the master plan is the policy document, right? So we went through that whole process, we said, okay, here's the township, these are areas we expect these different uses to be, we created a future land use map based on what we expected those uses to be. The future land use map targets this area to be a business park district. If they were looking for that to be commercial, that's when I think the appropriate time to make that play for...
Where in the timeline was the purchase made?
They've owned this property for a long time.
Well before?
Before your master planning process, yes. But I believe that that area has been zoned with the ROP for quite some time. I don't know if it's before or after they owned it, but it has been that way a long time now.
Linda, did you have a comment?
Yeah, it was zoned after they bought it. When they bought it, it was agricultural residential.
Okay, Lou.
And it's wrong for a developer to come in here and tell us how our community is going to develop. Mr. Whitaker said in a board meeting, if this area on the interchange someday is provided tax base for Salem Township, when the landfill's full and there's no more tipping fees, at some point, there's no more gas extraction. And so some of what you're planning for around that interchange is the diversity that the township needs, so they have a diverse tax base. If you just, and I don't want to take over your reading, but just a little bit of history. Those of you that live in the South Lion School District pay more debt to South Lion Schools than any other district in this area. And the reason we pay more debt to South Lion Schools is because South Lion Schools does not have a diverse tax base. It's over 90% residential. So if you go right now, South Lion pays 7.1 mils in debt. Pine pays just a little over three. North Hill pays about five, even Ann Arbor, we pay around five. And that's because they have a diversification in their tax base. They have commercial, they have industrial, they have research. And so when you, all a developer ever wants to do, he wants some maximum money out of his property, that's what he wants. When Showstack bought that property, it was owned agricultural residential. It's already been rezoned, and now they want something different because they want to make even more money. Don't let them dictate. You were appointed to the planning commission to look out for everybody in the township today and for our future. Thank you.
Does a process for changing zoning of any piece of property in this township?
Yes.
It exists, it works?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So there's an avenue for them to follow if they choose to do so.
Why are we talking about this?
Yeah, by all means, they can, they can...
Because that's what people do, well, is at 11th hour.
By all means, they can make an application to rezonate, but the work that you're doing right now, the text amendments that you're making, the map amendments that you're making are based on the policies that you created in the master plan. These are consistent with the direction that you've been working towards.
Okay. All right, Bart, so it's okay to move on?
This is their third bite at the apple. They were turned down the first time they wanted to rezone when they were buying it. We had a big fight over it, and then finally the township acquiesced and they rezoned. Now they want to be rezoned again.
Well, we just went through this whole master plan process for a very long time.
Any of this conversation isn't going to change the rezoning of that property. The conversation that we're having right now is not rezoning their property. We would never go and discuss a person's property, their ownership of it, and say, oh, by the way, we want to rezone it. No, that's not the way it works.
Technically, we are changing...
The capabilities of it.
We're changing the zoning district.
There's only names.
The name and the district. We're not changing the zoning of the property, we're changing how we refer to it. And if anything, we're... In fact, they're getting more uses.
They're getting more.
They're absolutely not objecting to what this is doing, they're just...
Okay. Yeah, we'll move on, because this... Yes, PJ.
So we're combining the ROP and the RRA into the business park, right?
Okay. There are some things, though, that were allowed in either the ROP or the RRA or both that are not allowed at all in the business park, which is the banks, credit unions, financial services, barber shop, beauty salon, or nail care, hotel or inn. That was allowed in both the RRA and the ROP, and it's not allowed in the business park. Showrooms, open air displays.
Yes.
So how is that, you know, I mean, I see it's allowed in certain areas, but how could you do this micro zoning?
You are correct, and those uses are more commercial in nature, they're more service oriented, and I don't think that, so, and we focused all of the commercial uses into the main commercial corridor on Guyfrithson. So really, all those service uses, those beauty salons, some of those things were like accessory uses that would only be committed as accessories if you were to create, so you're right.
So it doesn't, I mean, there are things it does not allow for at all, not even accessory use.
That is correct. But those things would only be oriented towards the people using, the way they were permitted before were only allowed as accessory and had to be geared towards the people working in these business, in these business buildings or office parks. So it's kind of an older model where the intent was that people would come into work, they'd spend their entire day there, they would have these facilities there. Where in this, where in this concept that we have, what we'd really like to do is encourage people to potentially walk from those businesses, from the business buildings to the local businesses in that commercial corridor, which is more of a village setting, which is in essence more consistent with where we think the planning is going and what we expect our residents or our business folks to want to do.
Daryl, did you have something?
Yes, I'm looking for the zoning map, but I don't see one on the map.
The very, very end.
The very end, I looked in the very end, and I still don't see one back here. But I wanted, my question was, what's on the map currently doesn't go away, just the name is being changed and that's it.
Correct.
Correct. Other than what TJ just brought up, some of the things don't...
So these, I think there were 11 parcels here, Dan, is that right? 11 parcels right here have all changed from ROP to B.
Okay, because I see, I don't have it in that, well, I don't have it in my packet.
Okay, that's the natural one.
Dan, did you have any questions? Are you raising your hand or anything?
No, no, no. Just taking it all in.
With your feet up. Bruce? Did you have any questions?
No. It's all been said.
Okay. Does anybody need any more time or... Okay. Oops. All right.
Just for whatever, we're looking at this map. I'm seeing Five Mile twice. I don't know if I need prescription, but, I mean, I should retype it up, it's kind of interesting, the shows. I'm looking at Angle Road coming down and touching into Five Mile. And then later on, over to the right, it turns into Six Mile. Like it crosses the train tracks. Something got shifted. You see what I'm, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see that Five Mile shows up on Chubb Road and Southern.
Yeah, Five Mile.
It's all over the place.
It's everywhere.
North, south, it's a couple places.
Oh, yeah, it's down there in the southwest corner, it's on their lower border.
That would make directions interesting.
It's just like Five Mile. You'll get there.
It's like going to...
Stop looking, it keeps showing up more and more.
It's like going to Atlanta, and every street is named Peach Street.
Peach Street, yes, you got it. It's a go-for-suit guide, alright.
No, I've just tried to get around Atlanta before. I'm sorry about that, I did not catch that, something went screwy, obviously, with the road naming, the labels on us, but we will fix it.
Weep Road is Five Mile.
Oh, yeah. So is Curtis.
And Weep Road, don't go there, hang out.
Figure out, Five Mile's Pontiac Trail? Alright. I will fix that.
That's funny. That is funny. That's a number of places. It's like a planning commission puzzle. Okay. Alrighty. I believe we are... PJ, you good? Okay. So I don't see where we had any changes other than fixing the map, just a couple of typos. So are we ready to make a motion?
And then last week, so future, future, we're going to come back to the other areas and go through those uses.
Yes.
So we only have one fix, and that's the map.
We have a couple of options here, let me just see if any of them recommend.
The third one, the third one down since you got one fix.
Okay.
How about the second one now?
Second one would be good. Good to recommend.
Now, are we talking this second one here? This one gives you a list.
That one right there.
This one?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. I make a motion to recommend that the township board approve the proposed zoning ordinance text amendments and amendments to the official zoning map, file number 20-003, with the condition that the following items are updated by staff prior to forwarding to the board. Number one is fix the area map.
Fix the labels on the...
Area map typos from Five, regarding Five Mile Road.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of recommending to the township board that we approve the zoning ordinance text amendments and amendments to the official zoning map, file number 20-003, with the conditions that the following items are updated by staff prior to forwarding to the board. Just one issue is fix all the Five Mile typos on the zoning map. Uh, just one, uh, issue is fix all the Five Mile typos on the zoning map.
I would suggest that this one, anything, you do a roll call.
Yeah, oh, yes, we're, we do roll calls in everything.
Okay. Keep you safe.
Okay. Mark?
Yes.
Daryl Lewandowski?
Yes.
TJ Malone?
Yes.
Anne Malone?
Yes.
Bruce Reed, yes. Robert Rizzo?
Yes.
Dan McGarry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All business items, none. Reports of commissioners and correspondents, board of trustees, welcome back. Probably nothing's correct. Yeah, okay. Uh, ZDA, it's on the board, none?
Nothing. Nothing.
Okay. Land preservation, conservation?
Nothing to do with land preservation, we're just logging away it.
Keep them, take care of business, huh?
Finding more properties.
Okay.
Working on what we have.
Cut them down, okay. Planning consultant review?
Uh, so I was asked to put together a zoning report for some of the zoning administration items, and I'll just run through this real quickly. Um, this is for both May and June. In fact, we probably should have added March and April in here, I can't remember before...
There was nothing.
There wasn't anything.
Okay, nothing. Um, so we have four new homes, um, two addition or remodels, seven accessory structures, seven, two decks, three pools, uh, six re-roofs and one demo. And I think that next month you'll see even more pools coming through.
More pools?
More pools, a lot of people say we're doing pools this summer.
Gotta get their kids out of the house.
Yeah, right. Can't go to the beach, build a pool.
That's right.
Um, and then, uh, we've had a, a number of enforcement items, um, a couple of cleanup issues, a couple of false alarms, one wasn't concerned about it. An illegal use that didn't turn out to be, another was a potential weapon violation that didn't turn out to be, so...
Huh?
We dealt with a couple of those items, and then, um, I don't know if any of you have been following, but the, uh, we, we approved a plan for, uh, Salem RV. They had lights, uh, that they put up illegally, and we went through the, maybe go through the site plan process. I can't remember if that came to you or if we just did that administratively.
I don't, I don't think it came here, I remember here, was that Seven and Curry?
Yeah.
Okay, no, that shouldn't come here.
So that was administrative, it was kind of a, a long process, they finally got the appropriate lights up, and I think that was, was put to bed.
Okay.
And then I think we mentioned last month that, uh, well, they, they had the application in for the building addition, so, uh, they're still moving along here, so...
Kayla?
Kayla.
They get all their permits for their wetland and all that stuff?
I believe so.
All righty. Um... Approval of the minutes for June fifteenth?
Motion to approve the minutes of June fifteenth, twenty twenty, as submitted.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor approving the minutes of June fifteenth, twenty twenty, as submitted, a roll call vote, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Daryl Lewandowski?
I have to abstain, I was not here.
Okay.
I don't have to do nothing.
TJ?
Thank you.
Anne Malone?
Yes.
Bruce Reed, yes. Robert Rizzo?
Yes.
And Dan McGarry?
Yes.
Twelve, public comment. Linda?
Just a point of order for your commission that when you have a vote for a minute, you don't abstain because you're not present. So anybody can have a total change. So take your township board, ours is running on a post, but if they had challengers and they lost, at some point you have a brand-new board that's seated, they still have to approve the minutes from the prior meeting. You're just approving the minutes, you have typically people who have been at the meeting to correct them, but minutes are approved. You don't abstain from minutes. The only time you abstain is if you have a conflict. And I don't know, I have to look up whether you, at this level, you defer you have a conflict or your, the rest of your commission determines you have a conflict.
Thank you. So do I need to fix this? No?
No, because it, it, it carried, it doesn't matter, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
The point is that...
I was just thinking for the record. Okay. I can't, yeah, okay.
There was an hearing.
Okay, very good. Uh, Mr. Horton, did you have a comment?
Yeah, if, if there's any planning to replan or re-histric or anything in the heavy industrial, would the members, our owners, be notified? So, 'cause I, this is kind of news to me, even though I usually come to meetings.
Yeah.
If it's a text amendment, the only requirement is to do, uh, notification in newspaper. If it's an actual change in zoning to your property, then it would be directed by...
'Cause I own forty-seven acres there now, so I kind of pay a lot of taxes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, chairperson comment? Just a, a quick comment on the email letter from the Showstack attorney. This is just a matter of process, this is what happens, it's happened before. You know, somebody comes in at the eleventh hour, and what they do is they put in their notice, they put in their word to be held, or heard, I should say. And so this is not, that happened with the golf course, you know? So this has happened before, and I'm sure it's regular. Um, and, but there is a process, um, and I'm sure it'll get worked out through a process. I also just wanted to, it's just a, just an FYI. There, I had two, just points of information, I've been seeing these articles, and I didn't know if any of you had seen them. So I just, just sent one article, I think this is from, oh, this is from Hometown Life, published, uh, July second. Residents fearful Salem Township landfill owners' plan may poison the creek. So apparently, there was a, a third, I guess, kind of a watchdog-type organization that is concerned about leechache from Salem Hills, and there's a whole process through, I want to say the DEQ, but they're called something else, Eagle, I think. So anyhow, this is just, and it's just one article, I don't have any information, but it is in our township, and so I thought, um, I would just let you know that apparently, the landfill is, has filed some sort of paperwork to do something, and Northville residents are not happy with that. I did see another article today, uh, I get a Northville, um, I don't even know what it is, just a little Northville magazine, and their supervisor had written a letter that's, that's very concerning. And I guess this all came about is through a FOIA act, you know, multiple FOIAs of what's going on with the landfill in Eagle. So I thought, you know, it's right there, you deal with them, you, you might be interested. And then, Paul, maybe you can, you can help me with the second one. You can probably explain it more clearly than I am, 'cause you know the woman that sent this out and brought it to my attention.
Well, I think Ed brought it to your attention.
Oh, Ed, okay, oh, that's right.
But the, the email and the letters are from Michigan Association of Planning, who tend to work closely with both, um, Michigan Township Association as well as, um, uh, the Michigan, um, municipal league on issues like this. And so they kind of pay attention to what's going through the legislature, and this was a bill that was proposed that would further take away local, um, government's ability to regulate, um, quarries and mines. Um, so there, there's already legislation in place that allows them to kind of do more than what they may be able to do if they had to go through the planning process, if they had to go through site plan process. And as I understand it, this bill would pretty much strip local authority of any ability to make decisions about, uh, quarries or mines within their local jurisdiction. So, uh, obviously, uh, you know, those three organizations are concerned with, with, uh, private industry being able to usurp the local authority, um, so they've put together a couple of letters suggesting that, uh, that should be reconsidered. It's been heard, um, in committee, it did not get out of committee, but we suspect that there will be further testimony taken later this summer. And so, uh, the point is just to put everybody on notice, and I think that article also has, uh, or the, the email has links to your local representatives, if you feel compelled to reach out and say, you know, we disagree with this, because we think the authority to make local planning decisions should be done.
Okay. That's it. Uh, meeting adjourned at eight eleven. Thanks, Dan.
I think previously, they were taking their water off-site and disposing...